You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
He's probably just, he's probably just waking up from last night. And he had a couple of coffee. Yes, Steve, I'm picking on you right there.
Okay, being probably 6:03 by now, I'll call to order the August 23 meeting of the planning board here at Wickham Hall. I'll begin with the roll call. Scott Self, that's me, I'm here. Richard Lane?
Here.
Jane Johnson?
Here.
Brandon Self?
Here.
Michael York?
Yeah.
Victoria Ames?
Here.
Selectmen Rep. Ken Colby?
Yep.
Steve Malone, alternate?
Here.
Almost checked you out, and I didn't see you there. Michael Scunzio, alternate? Not here. And Brian Vertigale, alternate? Not here. And we have a full board, so I won't be seating you for anyone unless somebody leaves. So, get back to our agenda. Applications, these are public hearings this evening. It's Planning Board number 23-019. That's a minor subdivision. Fieldstone Land Consultants, P L L C, on behalf of All Purpose Storage, Swansea West, LLC, requests a minor two-lot subdivision of property shown at Tax Map 52, Lot 16, on Base Hill Road. Subject of property is located in rural ag district and the business district. Public hearing number two, number 23-020, site plan review. Fieldstone Land Consultants, P L L C, on behalf of All Purpose Storage Facility, West, LLC, request a site plan review for construction of a multi-tenant services facility to be leased to various service businesses at 115 Base Hill Road. Subject property is currently shown at Tax Map 52, Lot 16, in the rural ag district and the business district. Upon a finding that the application meets the submission requirements of the site plan review regulations, the board will vote to accept the application as complete and public hearing may follow immediately or will be scheduled for a time and date certain. Public hearing number three. This is a boundary line adjustment. It's public hearing or Planning Board number 23-021, and that's a boundary line adjustment. T F Moore Incorporated requests a boundary line adjustment on behalf of F W Web Company for properties owned by Runway Fun Park, LLC, and Keith Bell and Kevin Bell, shown at Tax Map 34, Lots 32 and 32-1, at or near 471 Old Homestead Highway. Subject properties are located in the business, residential, and rural ag districts. Item number four, public hearing. Planning Board number 23-022, site plan review. T F Moore Incorporated requests a site plan review on behalf of F W Web Company to construct a 58,085 square foot wholesale warehousing facility and associated site improvements on properties owned by Runway Fun Park, LLC, and Keith Bell and Kevin Bell, shown at Tax Map 34, Lots 32, 32-1, at or near 471 Old Homestead Highway. The subject properties are located in the business, residential, and rural ag districts. Upon a finding that the application meets the submission requirements of the site plan review regulations, the board will vote to accept the application as complete and a public hearing may follow immediately or will be scheduled for a time and date certain. Discussions in other business this evening, comments of the select board regarding purchase of 110 Pine Street, Plan Reading Workshop, which we probably won't do, we've got enough plans we're going to be reading tonight, and any other business that may be required. Manager.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Can I make a motion, please?
You may, you may make a motion. Now, wait a minute. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I move that we cease and suspend everything after $2,100 and move to our next scheduled meeting.
Which for us non-military people is?
9:00 P.M.
9:00, okay. You moved to, uh, let's see, yeah, we would postpone, actually not postpone, we would continue anything after 9:00 to the next meeting is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Okay, so, brings us to, uh, our, um, let's see. Now, we need a motion for the, I can't think of the-
Regional.
Regional impact, you're right. Regional impact vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that there is a regional impact due to the fact that 23010 is 115 is on the line between Keene and Swansea. But we would need to notify the City of Keene along with all those abutters that are in Keene.
So this is which one? This is Base Hill Road you're talking about?
Right.
That's 020, I believe.
Yeah, I think so, right. I was looking for the number that you said.
020, okay, I'm sorry, 020.
So it's the, the Base Hill Road, uh, that, okay, so, so are you saying then that, uh, never mind, we'll get to that. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? In the discussion part of it, are you saying that we're going to continue this item and not even look at it until?
I believe Julius can tell us that they've already notified those abutters in Keene and the City of Keene, so I don't think we need to postpone it on that, but we need to put it in the record that we recognize that it's a regional impact.
Is that true, that they have been notified?
They've already been notified, but you want to be careful about making the motion to call it's a regional impact, which is what you do, that is, you do need to postpone the meetings, then leave those hearing about after a regional discussion invite further individuals that might be impacted by it, either the planning commissions or the planning boards. So I don't think that's necessarily the route that you might be intending to do with this. I think the important part of it is emphasizing that we did notify the City of Keene, we did notify the Keene abutters, if I may.
The City of Keene affected as well?
Yes.
I think that Keene is affected because of the road going down, and also the state because of the depot that they, you know.
So the City of Keene has been notified?
Right.
And the abutters that are in Keene have been notified. So, I think that, I don't know if your motion would agree with that, but I think that would be, that we've notified the abutters, City of Keene would be the ones that would be affected because that's part of their road there. Up to the board, so, as Julius was saying, that we will need to postpone the whole thing if that, in order to give a regional, any other person that has regional authority.
We also have a letter from one of the abutters attorneys asking for basically the same thing.
Yeah, but they're asking for time to prepare for their case, right? And, yeah, if it was the applicant, then we could grant that, but we don't really, yeah, we can take it under advisement, but we don't necessarily have that on that. That's an abutter.
Right.
So.
So we could deem the application complete if we find it so, and then postpone the consideration of?
No, we can postpone the public hearing. We can still look at the application and postpone the public hearing, because we probably wouldn't be able to open that up because we didn't give a regional board or anything a chance to weigh in on it, I think is what you're saying. And that's correct, too, as far as that, so.
Would that restrict the amount of time that we would have to go further?
It adds to it. It adds to the time. If it's a regional impact, it adds to it. That's the time on the end of the, that we have to consider.
With an initial 65 days or something like that?
I don't think, is it 14 days, two weeks?
14?
Yeah. No, it does, does do that. So, we would be using that up if we accept the application as complete tonight, because our next meeting won't be for another two weeks, if you catch my drift. It won't be, it'll be, we'd open a public hearing, we'd still have the same amount of time regardless. So, that's probably not anything that's really...
So you actually will check, it's not in our regulations, but you can find it in the OSI handbook.
So, motion on the floor to designate this, that it has regional impact, seconded by Richard, and through our discussion, are we going to continue with that, or are we going to modify it to say that we consider that we, by noticing the City of Keene and the abutters, that we can look forward on it? And I guess the vote will tell that.
I'll amend my emotion to that.
Okay, so, so your amended motion will be, I mean, motion, you said. Your amended motion will be to, that it has regional impact, and the planning board considers that we notified the City of Keene and the Keene abutters as proper notification.
Correct.
Okay. Do you agree with that, Richard, on the second? Because you seconded the motion.
Yes.
You do, okay. Any further discussion on that? Yes?
Somebody mentioned that the state has property, has the city party notified? They have been notified.
I don't know if they have been notified. They're in a butter. They haven't been notified?
Are they in a butter?
Aren't they in a butter to the back of that?
I'll have to check the listing.
I think they were on the...
They should be in the back of the property. See if they're on, you have a copy of the abutter list, right?
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
No, the state hasn't.
No.
They haven't. Now, what does that do for us? You know, the state does need to be notified since they are in a butter.
It's an incomplete application, isn't it?
Uh, they're in a butter. I believe they're in a butter to the back. Okay, let's take a look at them. Let's see if they really are. They're not? Is there something in between? Would you just point out, or I'm going to take, let me take a look at your drawings and see. Number three is a subdivision, I mean, yeah, subdivision is sheet three. So it's All Purpose owns that land all the way out back there, is that correct? It looks like, yeah, they own the land completely out back to Manana Community Society and to the Buffums there, so. And, let's see, City of Keene is the other one, okay, you're correct. The state is not in a butter. Okay, back to the motion. Any other further discussion there? Dan answered that question. So, any other further discussion from anyone? And all those in favor of the motion that the board determines that this has regional impact, but only to the City of Keene, and we've notified the City of Keene and the Keene abutters, that's what we're saying here. Okay, so, is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor of the motion, okay, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Okay, motion is passed. Now, that brings us to the approval of the minutes. We'll get that out of the way. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes in a second?
I move.
Motion by Jane to approve the minutes, and seconded by Victoria. Is there any further discussion on changes in the minutes? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, beyond that. Now, our first item up is, that item A, that's a public hearing on the minor subdivision, and this is on the All Purpose Storage and Storage West, and that's on the Base Hill Road there. And, let's just have a look here.
So if you determine that it was a regional impact, we want to hear the applicant, accept the application as complete, and we don't want to continue from that point forward?
I think we can continue from that point forward. You don't think so?
I don't think so.
No?
At least after reading the guidance from there. I don't know if you want to take a look in the language.
Now, let's, let's just, yeah, we'll hear, we can go, uh, we've got two things. We've got the subdivision, and we've got the site plan, so. Your motion was for the subdivision and the site plan?
Yes.
Or just the site plan? Subdivision as well? Because the subdivision probably doesn't have regional impact. You're just dividing a piece of land there, but the site plan you do.
Maybe just for the, uh...
So we can go through the subdivision, in my opinion, anyway. I don't know about the rest of the board.
I'll go through that.
Yeah, and, and we can accept the application as complete or not complete, whichever way we go on the site plan review, and continue until the next meeting, since it's a regional impact. According to Julius, they should really be notified if we're considering regional impact, and it probably is, it's on Keene's butter.
Point of origin, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So you are not going to consider the boundary line adjustment, or you are?
We are. This one is the, is a, um, it's a subdivision, yeah, and we are going to do that because it's just a subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, subdivision, and that would be the minor subdivision. And we have the application in front of us here. Page number three on that is, is the, the drawings for the subdivision. Um, we're seeing if the application is complete, then we'll open it up.
There you go. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just for the subdivision.
Yep, that's page three. And we're just going to see if the application is complete, and we're just going to go over some of the items on there. It's, it's less for the subdivision anyway. So we have the name and address of the owner, and see, we have the flat submission checklist, and I can run down through them, if anybody wants to follow on the pages there. We're not the subdivision name or title, and that would be All Purpose Storage Swansea, LLC. They have that. They have the name and address of the owner is there, they've checked that. And the scale is 1 inch to 30. They're doing it 1 inch to 80 just so they can show the whole thing, which is fine. They're asking for a waiver there, which, again, Planning Board will grant the waiver. I'm sure we can, we can grant that right now, or we can just run down the list. Let's just run down the list. And we have the North Arrow, we have that there. Locust plan, we have it there up in the right-hand corner. Seal of surveyor, and here, certify wetland scientist, that's a wetland scientist. Where's the surveyor? There's a surveyor right there. We need to get the surveyor. Under survey, including bearing distances and location of markers, boundaries would be here, air pipe, they made that. The elevations, is this some water main, sewers, culverts, drains, sewage and surface drainage, and they denote anything that's existing, which it isn't existing there. I do not believe Keene Water is down there anyway. They've included that. Adhesments, rights of ways in buildings, I don't know there have been adhesments, but we'll get to that with our, when we do the public hearing. Because we're going to have to address that. All right. And location of property lines, including entire individual lots, lot areas, frontage on public right-of-way, we have property lines delineated. And we've got topographical contour, boundaries, five-foot intervals, 172, four-foot intervals, which is fine, it's a pretty flat piece there. Location of groundwater, if there's any. Per test, didn't have to do with per test. I'm just going to ask a question. Mr. Brandon? You don't do per test, you're going to put a septic system on here, right? But there aren't per tests?
You have no septic on local lots.
Oh, you have, okay. You've marked that that didn't apply.
It's not really required for-
For the subdivision?
For over five acres.
Okay. And you have them on the site plan?
Yeah.
Good, thanks. And soil mapping types and slopes and boundaries, and soil types, right there. Included deed restrictions, if there are any deed restrictions, may or may not, don't know. Open space to be preserved.
No deed restrictions, actually.
Oh, we do have one there?
No, it's in the right way, actually.
Okay, and that's shown, great, thank you. Billings and other man-made structures remain that are there, there are the buildings right there. Closed streets, right-of-way, areas of right-of-way, but the street is going to be a right-of-way, I would say. Final road profiles, need to do that because the road's already there. All drainage and erosion control plans, need to do that. State subdivision septic approval is pending, and state highway municipal access permit is pending as well. So, it looks to me like everything's on there. I need to see, have anything else on that? It's page three on, we're doing sheet number three right now.
I know, I was looking at something. I was listening.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant on that, whether it is complete or not? Would be contour? Mr. Brandon, you have the soil survey, is that on this, this drawing, or is that on one of the site plan drawings? You're choosing out the drainage of the site plan, isn't it? I know I saw that in there somewhere, you had the soil survey.
With this, with this site plan, Mr. Chairman, it triggers an alteration of terrain permit, so we have to do a site-specific soil survey, which is an actual detailed soil survey on, for that permit. So typically, the NRCS soil survey, which is just an overlay of those total boundaries, for this site was really just a jurisdictional boundary line, which we have detected on the lands in certified. So we would be providing a site-specific soil survey as part of that permit.
So technically, we don't have it yet.
You wouldn't have it because it would be part of that permit, which would normally be a condition of the site. But we do have the, the soil boundary, which is jurisdictional boundary line, detailed complex, effectively that is, that is permanent.
But, yeah, okay, so, it's an item that has to be on there, so, you can ask for a waiver on that, and that it'll come later, as like you're saying, with the alteration of terrain permit?
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I would be happy to do that, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to formally request, because we're going to be exceeding that standard for the site-specific soil survey as part of the site, which is off.
And it's, it's, the soils are probably the typical, it's in Swansea, the Windsor loam, I don't know, 52 or whichever that one is there, but it'll be with the site-specific permit there. So he's asking for a waiver, so we need a motion whether we're going to have a waiver or not, to have them delineated on this drawing here or not, which they are not. I thought they had had them here, but they don't. So, a motion to grant the waiver or not grant the waiver?
I make the motion that we grant the waiver.
I'll second.
Motion by Brandon to grant the waiver for the delineation of the soil types, seconded by, right, an A for a second there.
Michael.
Michael. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so that's a waiver. And if there's nothing else on the completeness of the application, then we need to vote whether it's complete or not, and to go to public hearing.
I move the application.
Let's step back just a second. Okay, we just did a soil thing. Is that really a part of the subdivision, during the subdivision, or?
Uh, it, it'll be-
Because if we've done something that's in 20, 020, then we've gotten ahead of ourselves and opened up.
They'll need it for the, they'll need it for the site plan review, because we require it for the site plan review as well. The soil types in there and where they are.
Okay, but my, my question again is, have we gone into an area of 20, 020?
Oh, oh, for the, for overstepping that hearing that we're going to continue?
Right.
No, we haven't, because it's required on both drawings. So, you know, it's something that's required here, and they're going to have it for the next part of it, which is the actual, the site plan review. So, it's not going to hurt anything that we don't have it here, because we will require it when we do have that public hearing.
It just, it presumes that this subdivision will always be linked to the next stage of development. In other words, they could, we could subdivide, lacking that piece of information, and they could decide, oh, on second thought, we're not going to do the construction.
Yeah, right, that's true. You know, they could, we'd still grant subdivision, they may never do the subdivision, right, if they didn't do the project.
Is that, is that what you're saying, that we sort of link the two?
No, inadvertently.
What you're saying is that we've gotten into that public hearing part of it, which we probably aren't going to do until two weeks.
Because according, you know, reading what we're supposed to be taking up is a two-lot subdivision.
Yeah.
It has nothing to do with any construction or anything of that-
No.
-nature.
No, not at all.
So then why are we talking about soil?
Oh, I see what you're saying there.
Et cetera, because that's part of 020.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I think the only reason it's being talked about is because it's technically in the checklist. You have the same checklist for both subdivision and site plan applications in town?
Right.
And because it's on the checklist, you know, we have to formally address that item on both applications. Both applications are 100% independent of each other, so the board just approved the waiver for the soil mapping only as it relates to a two-lot subdivision, which creates really large complying lots. So, when we, you know, I believe, and certainly not intending to put words in anybody's mouth, but I believe what Mr. Chairman was stating is that we would have to address that same waiver with the site plan application. So they're really not linked from that regard.
And also, if I may, the soil mapping shouldn't really have much to do with the actual subdivision itself, as it would have to do with something going on the property. Soil, if the soil conditions, if soil mapping came in that the soil was not good enough to put something on there, you could still subdivide it, but you just couldn't put something on there. You know, it's for the drainage wise, is what we're talking about. So, what I'm saying is that if it, we're voting to grant a waiver not to have that delineated on here for this, at this point in time, but if they're going to put something on the property, which they intend to do, they would have to have that soil delineation on there to prove that the soil was good enough to build on and for drainage and so on and so forth. Yes?
So for purposes of clarification, I'd like to see an amendment to the motion that it pertains to the first application for subdivision only.
Well, there is only one application for subdivision, that's this one. It's not a first one, it's the application for subdivision. We're, we aren't dealing with the other one at all, we're just dealing with this one, whether we're giving them a waiver, not delineating that Windsor soil or whatever happens to be on that piece of property there. So, I don't think we need to bring the other one into it at all. Just whether we're going to accept this as complete or not, I say that it is complete, that isn't on there, but again, it doesn't really stop you from subdividing, it just stops you from building something there if the soil is poor. So, I think we have a motion on the floor still.
Yes, you still do.
So.
We each have a vote.
All, yeah, all in favor of the waiver on the soil delineation, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all is opposed? Okay.
Yeah, oh, you did, okay, thank you.
So that's a waiver on that. So now, after that waiver is done, an application, I mean, a motion for completeness of the application would be in order.
I'll move that the application is complete.
Motion by Michael York to say that the application is, application is complete and ready to go to public hearing. Correct? Okay, is there a second? Second by Jane. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is opposed? Okay, I will open up the public hearing. And, Mr. Brandon, if you would make your presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name's Chad Brandon, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants, and we're here tonight representing All Purpose Storage Swansea West, LLC, with their subdivision application over Tax Map 52, Lot 16. The subject site has a physical address of 115 Base Hill Road. It is situated on the east side of Base Hill Road, and it's highlighted, the boundary of the perimeter of the site is highlighted in the blue line on the plan that we have before you this evening. The subject property consists of 10.093 acres of land, has about 560 linear feet of frontage.
five hundred and sixty linear feet of frontage along Bay Hill Road, and the majority of the subject property is located in the business district. The zone boundary is also shown on the plan here, you can see it just clips kind of the northeastern corner of the site. So the portion of the property to the east would be in the rural ag district, and then the portion of the property, the majority of the site, is in the business district. The business district has minimum lot size requirements of one acre and 125 feet of frontage. And what we're proposing is a two-lot subdivision, creating lots that would significantly exceed those requirements. There are some existing improvements on the subject property, there's a self-storage facility that's positioned along the southern portion of the site. And essentially, what we're proposing to do with this application is to subdivide the self-storage portion and put that on to its own property, so that we can then look, look forward to developing the northern portion into a, into a different type of a development. In order to minimize impacts along Bay Hill Road, we are proposing the share and access here, so the subdivision plan does show an easement for the shared access. And then, you know, there, we do have some proposed easements stormwater-wise also shown on here, which is kind of taking a step ahead, but because we have a plan for that, you know, we do have some drainage easements on this plan as well. All of those easements would be between the two parties, um, subject, or between the two lots that we're proposing. So the lot with the self-storage facility on it would be three point one four three acres in size. We have it depicted as parcel fifty-two dash sixteen. And then just to the north of that, we, we have a six point nine five acre property proposed, which was, is depicted as parcel fifty-two sixteen dash one. Both of the lots would, you know, far exceed the 125-foot minimum frontage requirements. We've depicted all of the applicable setbacks. And we're not proposing any development in this application, so we're not really speaking to, you know, anything that's proposed with the site plan. It's really kind of a simple, straightforward application. We believe we meet all of your criteria, and we hope the board would consider, you know, an approval for this application this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The, the hash in area where the driveway is, that's the boundaries of the easement? It looks like there are boundaries on there? Is that, is that correct? Is that what that is?
That's correct. We defined that shared access and utility easement with that hatch.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Regarding the, the easement that you will have for drainage, which way will it go? In other words, will you be, does the, the self-storage facility require the northern parcel to make its drainage work? Or does it go the other way?
So the self-storage facility, because of the date of that development, doesn't...
Can I just stop you there for a second? Because you just got done saying we aren't proposing anything for that lot, that piece of land, and I know that you asked about it and stuff, but it really pertains to if we do the site plan.
But you're talking about an easement that's, that's built into this...
He is talking about an easement.
It would benefit, I guess, just to answer your question in a very broad basis, it benefits both properties, because drainage from both, portions of both sites will go there.
To, to, will be, how does, the easement will be, it will be on the...
It'll be on fifty-two sixteen, so it technically benefits sixteen dash one.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Yes, could you come up and identify yourself, please?
Mary Fish, send me two things.
Mary Fish? You said?
Yes.
Okay, Mary, Mary Fish.
Two Bay Hill Road. I have one question regarding the boundary lines. The map shows a boundary line that's very squiggled, and it shows that they found two pins and two pipes. It doesn't indicate who that property belongs to. When my husband and I purchased our land forty-six years ago, we were told that that is our property line that goes into the field. And they haven't indicated who it belongs to and who it doesn't belong to. So I am under the impression that that is our property inside the field that they have surveyed, and I'm wondering why they didn't indicate who it belonged to.
Could you point out which property we're talking about?
We probably can, this is a...
Yeah, again.
Where you found the two pins, you indicated the two pins over here, right up here, to here, and it didn't say it belongs to you, but the green line right there indicates that our property. Can you tell me if that's...
So what we are defining here, Mr. Chairman, is our boundary?
I just wanted to see what you pointed out.
See, it shows this is a straight line, but the town line actually goes up this way, it's showing in the front. So it's ranch town, like, so our property actually stands and goes into the field. And those are the two pins that they found there, that are in the ground. But they didn't indicate, they, this, you know, outline, and then it's, it's their property.
That's correct. Everything inside the blue is the owner of All Purpose Storage West LLC. We have defined this boundary.
So why did you define those two pins? Why would you, how would you justify those two pins as theirs?
Well, we, we did the research, boundary research on all the adjacent properties.
And you surveyed it?
And we surveyed it, we did a physical field survey, there was, there was title research done, and that's the decision for the boundary of the property. We certified to it, and so that is...
Decision by your company?
Absolutely, yeah, and the attorneys that, that did all the title research.
So not the decision by the city of Keene or the property owners?
Well, nobody, those, adjacent property owners don't make decisions, there's, there's information on...
Okay, I'm going to let you talk, and then I'm going to talk, that's the way this works. But, right, the, the decisions generally in that regard are made by the surveyors and not by the city or of the Keene or the city or the town of Swansea either, but surveyors from deed information that they research and title searches, as he mentioned as well, from the attorneys. So you can...
Can you concede, Mr. Chairman, we do have a survey, surveyor certification on the plan?
Yeah.
That defines that we have defined the boundary on this property within appropriate, you know, state certification guidelines, so we've done the means and methods necessary to certify an appropriate boundary for this property.
And you can still privately dispute that, regardless, if you wish to, and have it decided civilly, but that's not a matter for, for our board tonight.
I was just curious why they did not, you know, indicate it on the soil.
And that doesn't answer your question, or it does answer your question? It does not?
We, we represent on the plan that anything inside the boundary that's highlighted in the blue belongs to our, our...
Okay. And any other questions? Yes, sir.
Neil Fish?
Neil Fish, Neil.
You said that this section also needs an amount of frontage?
That is correct, yeah, yeah.
And they're combining this with the one that's already there?
No, they're splitting all, I'll let Mr. Brandon talk to it, but they're splitting the property, you're ending up with two, if he would, he would point that out.
So, I'm currently, sir, the property has frontage from this point, because that's along Bay Soul Road, which is about five hundred and sixty feet of frontage. And what we're doing is this orange line represents the proposed subdivision, so we're proposing a line here that agrees, this parcel fifty-two sixteen, and then this one fifty-two sixteen one. And the frontage on this new property will be about, be about two hundred and twenty-five feet, and so we would far exceed the 125 foot of park. And then this one is obviously more than that, this, the remainder of that five hundred and sixty feet.
Yes, ma'am? Could you come up, please? We have Debra for the record, and people online can't hear you unless you use a microphone, so...
My name is Deborah Sprague, I live at the forty-two...
Deborah Sprague.
Thank you.
Sprague.
We bought our home over forty-eight years, and it's been a time, the kids, they're needing their school bus, had to go over and stand on the gas station. I got the Supreme bus on tour loads, and I'm hard to... With the marketplace running...
Let me stop you right there for a second, because it sounds like you're getting into the site plan part of it, this is just dividing the property, we aren't getting into discussing what's going to be built on it yet.
Well, I need to let you know that our road is already dangerous, because of the marketplace and market basket.
Mm-hmm, and we'll be addressing that on public hearing when we discuss the site plan that's going in there. Right now, it's, it looks, it'll probably postpone, but just stay with us, and we'll let you know the date when it's going to be postponed, or continued, probably.
Traffic is horrible, the road is narrow, they haven't even completed after our October eight oh.
And the planning board will look at that when the site plan comes up. And this is just for dividing the property, that's it, just a small...
We will be notified again.
Um, you won't be notified again, if, if we give you the date at the meeting when that public hearing is going to be, that's when it's going to be, and, and generally, you don't send out notifications prior to that, if it's notified at the meeting, and we will do that. Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the board? Then I will close the public hearing. So, have a look, discuss, motion, it's pretty straightforward, you take in one lot, dividing into two, they have the proper frontage, um, easements on there, it's straightforward in that regard. And again, we're just doing the subdivision, we aren't talking about anything that'll be built on it. So, motion would be in order, one way or the other.
No, we don't want to make a motion tonight?
I think it's you.
So moved.
A motion by Michael York to approve, wanting to approve.
The application, uh...
We already did the application, that's complete.
Right, I'm sorry, approving the subdivision.
Okay, a motion by Michael York to approve the subdivision, is there a second? Seconded by Richard Lane, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all who oppose? Okay, we're through that part of it, that's the subdivision part of it. That brings us to the next item, which is the site plan part of it.
Mr. Chairman, may I address the board as it relates to the site plan real quick?
Pardon me?
May I?
I didn't hear you.
May I address the board as it relates to the site plan real quick?
Yep.
Since the board has deemed that the site plan is of regional impact, and I know the soil will be a discussion item for this particular application, and I do know that there is another application on the agenda this evening, I think we would just like to request a continuance to your next meeting two weeks from now, so that we can, you know, work on addressing, you know, that soil comment, so that we won't have to formally request that waiver for that. There's a, there's a few staff items that we'll, we'll be able to address in that two-week time, if we can possibly be continued for two weeks. And it will also allow appropriate time for the regional impact notice. I think that by the sounds of the testimony earlier, that might create a situation more comfortable for the board, and we're happy to proceed in that fashion, if that makes sense.
All right, thank you. So, what we can do is, we can continue the entire thing until our next meeting, or we can go over the application now as complete or incomplete. The soils aren't on it, so we'd either, either give a waiver for that or deem it incomplete. And I don't think it matters to you whether we look at the application as complete or not this time, or wait until the next meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so probably the best thing to do maybe would be to postpone this item due to the applicant's request until our next meeting, and that would be September fourteenth, thank you, Julius, September fourteenth. So that would be September fourteenth, right here, six o'clock, okay? And you won't get another notice in the mail, that's, this is it. Put it on your calendar.
Was there a vote for that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we need a vote for that.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Just let me put this down here. Yep. Okay, a motion by Michael York to continue this item due to the applicant's request until our next meeting at September fourteenth, and seconded by Brandon himself, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all who oppose? Okay, we'll continue.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We didn't really ask, excuse me, we never really asked if there was anybody online that wanted to come in or anything.
No, actually, I didn't, I keep on forgetting that, but really...
Nobody's screaming, Richard, so...
I think they, I think, I don't know if anybody's on, you know, he is over there, I think he would let us know, the guy running, he would let us know if there's somebody right in our hand. But again, if not, you know, this is a public meeting, and they can come to this meeting, everyone else comes to this meeting.
Brandon, I need a quick break.
Okay, go right ahead. We're taking a five-minute recess.
I got two page floors.
Thanks, yeah.
I don't know, you both face, that's the issue, which I'm just...
This is the one that we're talking about, I mean, the Bay Soul one? It's, it's an odd, it's an odd thing, we're going to have to get into that during that, at the public hearing, this scene. It's not, it's not so much...
These are the dumbest boxes, they're like a baby doll. They're weird. And if you knock on them, they're disabled.
Just a reference to it.
Trade-focused storage.
Yeah. It's a, in my opinion, it's a decent concept to have, because it's a needed thing. But, you know, they've got, well, we'll point out the board, they've got that written out, and they'll have to explain that, and how to figure that one out.
I did work the boundary, two people, I had a finger down there. She's not looking, but just the Lord's...
But on this Bay Soul Road here, where she did...
This is the, this is the, nothing to fear, it's a big, uh, road, it's all, she's up to, you know, to, to the car, this car, but I don't know if it's, it's not... And, and do what, I'm, my feet are getting wet, just walk.
You know, they had a soil scientist, this guy right here, uh, yeah, that's the one in here, and he put his stamp on it, essentially, he's got a, there's a paper in here anyways that he talks about it.
At the end of the, this hole here is, it's like, when you're standing right here, it's right here. Look here, so I'm standing with my feet on the, on the support part, and here's the wet...
Yeah, what do you need? They don't have the soil, so they don't need to build it there. Oh, I flagged it for, I don't know if they flagged it for wetlands, and usually they flag it for wetlands.
It's almost like, it's going to the boundaries of the buildings, what it looks like.
Oh, that could be, they've done that too, but again, if it's, if it's wet, if you have the bill on there, the builder's not going to build it. to build it.
Don't worry, you just need to stand.
Standing is good.
Sorry, I got, yeah, I got two minutes.
We can find your language first.
Here we go again.
Just a select one, I'm requesting a pay raise for the planning board. I thought you'd give me a hundred percent, and a hundred percent is zero, zero out.
This is the copy that actually Victoria was in. Pull it right over there. Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. And our next item is a boundary line adjustment, and that's a public hearing. T.F. Warren Incorporated requests a boundary line adjustment on behalf of F.W. Web Company. And that's over by, for properties owned by Runway Fun Park and Keith and Kevin Bell. And that's a tax map 34, lots 32 and 32-1 at our near 471 Old Homestead Highway. And the properties are located in the business, residential, and rural ag districts. And we have, it's a simple application for the boundary line adjustment, and everyone has a copy of it there. There is not a checklist that we go by. They're looking for a waiver, and that waiver would be for the scale that they're using. Because it doesn't, it's not the 50 foot, I think is what the regulations go. So they're looking for that waiver, and that's it for the scale. And in your packet, you have a small drawing of it. There's a large drawing of it there of the subdivision. So. Pretty much? Oh, yeah, yeah, you can write, we'll do that. I'm just getting everybody to do their paperwork, and we need to address that waiver first. We require 50 foot per inch on the subdivision regulations, and they're giving us, I think, a 60 foot per inch, which, no big deal really, but they're just asking for a waiver because that's part of our regulations, so we have to deal with that, so. Anybody?
There's three different scale, three different scales that I believe that I read that are involved in this.
Well, let's take a look and see. We'll find out right now what that is right there. It's usually right there, and let's see if there, it is, they're using 60 feet per inch is what they're using on the draw, and that's what they're asking a waiver for. It's right here.
I thought I read something associated with 80.
You're looking at, that's a site plan, yeah. So this is just a, just a lot line adjustment they're talking about here. And it's 60 feet per inch, when we require 50 feet per inch. And again, it's a big deal, it's a formality, so if anyone wants to make a motion that we grant them the waiver. I'll make a motion that we grant them the waiver. Motion by Brandon Self to grant the waiver of a 60 feet per inch scale as opposed to the 50 feet required. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Seconded by Ken. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate the saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Okay, got that.
Ken did the second.
So, that being done, I'll open up the public hearing and give them a second to string that out. And meanwhile, anybody wants to take a look at the larger drawing? It's right here. He'll be giving his presentation, and we've got a copy of it in our packet, a smaller drawing right there, which pretty much tells us what's going on. So I can take that from you.
No. Get it, dude.
What about the Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is this the application, hey, is that something that you're motivated on?
Uh, no, generally on the lot line adjustments, we don't.
But you do think the floor that's the other, which is a subdivision.
That's a subdivision.
So you do the subdivision, but not along the boundary line adjustment?
Yeah, they don't have a checklist on it. They have to include this, 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 and this.
Understood.
Okay, you're all set? Then I've opened up the public hearing, and you make your presentation, you identify yourself for the record, and go on.
Sure. My name is Matt Ruth here from T.F. Moran, representing the applicant, which is F.W. Web through Greenleaf Construction. To the back, here's Jamie Anderson on Greenleaf. The intent and purpose is to adjust the lot line from lot 32 and 32-1 to obtain roughly 2.012 acres for the proposed site plan that's next. That is the only reason the lot line's being adjusted. I know that there's, the soils and all that information are associated with the site And the intent, this lot, as it exists now, is currently 5.109 acres, lot 32, and we're adding an additional 2.01 acres for a total of 7.21. It's a simple lot line adjustment. As you can see, the existing lot line here is here, and we're sliding it over to add this leg in this particular point. We see that all requirements as far as frontage and size, and it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Yep, it would be pretty straightforward. I'll see what he's doing there. They need extra, I don't think they were partners, something's going on there, but they need an extra lot size for this site plan. So any, just, any questions from the, from the public there? Any questions from the board?
Can you repeat the frontage again, just so we can get some minutes?
Are you looking for the total frontage?
Yep.
Um, I know we, I don't think I have a total written down on this. It's probably on the site plan application, in the site plan.
I think it's 1,037. If the site plan is, we think it's 1,037. I just wanted to make sure. 1,037.
I don't think it's that. Don't put that, I don't, I'm not so sure it's that. Just don't put it down. I think it's nine, I thought it was 900 or something, but maybe not. I might be wrong about that.
No, I think it was 900 after we calculated it.
Okay. All right, so we'll just.
I'm asking now, well, I guess, for the site plan, but also to make sure that's, we know what its frontage is for this application. Maybe I'm over sniffing. Oh, it's close. 1,038.
It's 1,038, the total frontage.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public? Yes, sir.
This is for the second reading?
No, this is just for the lot line adjustments.
And that's next, right?
The site plan is next, yes.
So we have enough to review this here.
Nothing more, nothing further, then I will close the public.
In the boundary, now, it probably will come up in site plan. Looking at this, part of this property is resident part of this business.
And rural ag too.
Yeah, so where, we address that in site plan?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a trifecta there going on. We'll take a look at it in site. Any other further discussion here before I close the public hearing? You know, I'll close the public hearing and support deliberate. Again, it's pretty straightforward, moving the line over, give them extra space to develop that piece of property. Any discussion? Any motion?
Motion that we accept it as.
Motion to approve the lot line adjustment by Richard Lane is our second. Seconded by Jane, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate the saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Okay, done with that part of it. Now we'll move on to the site plan review, while we can get into the details there. That's for the same piece of property, and that is item number D, which is the planning board number 23022. That's a site plan review. And T.F. Warren requests a site plan review on behalf of F.W. Web Company, which construct 58,085 square foot wholesale, where our facility and associated site improvements on properties owned by Runway Fun Park and Keith and Kevin Bell. That's a tax map, lot 34, lots 32 and 32-1 at our near 471 Old Homestead Highway. Properties are located in business, residential, and rural ag districts, and on the function of the application, meets the submission requirements of the site plan review regulation report, we'll vote to accept the application as complete, and the public hearing may follow immediately or will be scheduled for a time of day, sir. So we're looking for the completeness of the application. Let's get our checklist out. So looking for, I'll just run down again if I can here. So, let's see, they're asking for a waiver, let's see. They're asking for a waiver for the scale again, and which again is no big deal, where they'll need a waiver. And let's see what else here. And a waiver for site planned trees along the frontage, and we can, I don't think we ought to grant that waiver yet while we're doing the completeness of it. That'll come up when we're discussing the whole site plan because it has to do with the number of trees on that frontage there, so we'll just skip over that waiver. They don't really need a waiver, it's what the board approves and what the board doesn't approve. So the only waiver here on the completeness part is the scale, and we can get that out of the way right now, actually, with the motion. I'll make the motion that we approve it again. Motion by Brandon that we grant the waiver to change the scale. Is there a second?
Second. No.
Are you seconding or you're?
No.
Well, let him second it first, and then we can discuss the, we're on the motion. Are you seconding?
Well, he's suggesting it's a motion of one to 50.
One to 60.
One to 60, and there are three different scales here. I mean, or two, because there's one to 80 at some point on this also.
But it just has to do with how it fits on the plat, really. The scale really isn't, isn't a huge deal to the planning board here.
No, I'm just covering our bases.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, if we, we give them a motion, a motion to grant them a waiver on the scale or scales, if there are multiple scales, then that should cover it.
Make it plural, that's fine.
Plural. Motion plural. Your, they have a motion, you second it, second. Good, okay. Any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate the saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Okay, that's that one. Let's see, where was I there? Right there. So, name and address of owner, it's on there. Tax map, lot number, it's on there. Tax map lot number right there. North Arrow. The heat here. North Arrow right there. Lot preparer, maybe just a lot preparer.
They're different, on the scale, most applications, they had, they had to go through, because there's two applications on.
Right there, still engineers, them, Sydney Sketch, she's right there. This is putting landowners, and I don't see them on this plan, oh yeah, do see them on that plan, okay, landowners there, there, there. Physical features, and these have been 200 feet, and you've got them on perimeter there. Not much physical, seems how it's all flat, but it's there. And if I'm wrong, you know, just jump in if I'm saying something wrong here. Frontier boundary lines, lot area in square feet and acres, and, I don't know, that's here someplace. Do you have on one of your drawings in delineated in acres and square feet on one of your drawings? That you know of off the top of your head? I'm just checking, going off.
I believe so.
You don't know which one it is?
I do know it's on, uh, just the lot line.
Oh, that one there. Okay.
It may very well be on the site plan as well.
Now, it's, that drawing isn't included in the site plan. I think that would be drawing C4. Boundary lines, acres, so, yeah, okay, right there, boundary lines. And where is the square feet? Yeah, 5.19 acres, 222, 552 square feet, yep, that's there. Shape and size, height, location, use of existing structures in the site, those that are proposed, that's what's existing there, showing us there. And other where, I mean, other places in here are the proposed buildings that we've seen, and we know that's there. Let's see, name and location and width of any existing and proposed roads on the property, and let's see, we have the driveways. They're not in this plan, but they are in the other plans there.
On C7.
Is it C7? All right, the overall site plan, yep, C7. Yep, and there they are. Showing the driving and driveway. Location and number of parking and loading spaces. And they are there, parking, parking. Landstate plan, I know is included in there because I saw it on here, landstate plan right there. Location type, this is new proposed lighting, and I know there's a lighting plan in there because I saw it before. Should be good, maybe something's going to explain it. I thought I saw it, yeah, there's a lighting plan, a reference associated with landscape. So you don't have a lighting plan in there?
No, there is.
Yeah, I thought there was one, and I don't see it on, I mean, it's not a numbered drawing anyway. It's a reference plan by Associated Professionals, lighting plan, is that in here?
They do have a lighting plan.
I know I saw one someplace, oh, there it is, right? That's it, isn't it? Yeah, that's it right there.
It's kind of more political looking, I think.
That's it, right?
Could see it.
Yep, that's the one there, that lighting plan. Gotta find my place again. Natural features such as water bodies, ledge, help dropping, wetlands, and so on and so forth. Let's see, what else in that plan? I don't think there's too many wetlands on there, I have to make, there's a general layout of it. Existing and proposed grades and geographical contours at flat intervals, and again, there's not much on there. Let's see. C9, look like it is. And C9 is, and that's just, that's just proposed. You may see the existing conditions. There it is, right there. There we are. Yeah, that's just about completely flat. Again, that's the existence on there, except for over there, right, and 12 is too. Again, that's the existence on there, except for over there, right, and 12 is two foot intervals right there. Size and accurate location of all existing, and both water mains, culverts, fire hivers, and fire ponds. There aren't any fire hivers over there, and there's no water over there that I know of either, no water mains. Culvert on there. And, it's not marked because, these are provided water supply, now they have a well on there, someplace I saw on the drawings. It's not on this one, but I know there's a well proposed there, or there's an existing well, so over here. Surface drainage patterns, and they have that on that, the proposed drainage drawing, we've got that. Let's see, this one does not look like a designer, copy of certification, you're putting in a new septic system over there, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's pretty much been signed off minus the AOP requirement, so it won't really see that last.
Okay. Okay, location and type of proposed sewer disposal systems, again, that's right there. Say a well showing 75 foot radius, that is in this, in this set of drawings. Okay, soil survey data from Chicago Soil Survey, and those are delineated. Yeah, on the Dixon, let's see.
The soil information should be on the grading sheet, but it is site specific soil, which is more, again, specific to the site, calculated by soil scientists, so.
That would be on C9, that's your grading one?
I believe so.
Yep, and I was just looking for the soil, and how is that delineated?
Uh, site specific.
It's in the application you're talking about, or it's on the drawing?
Uh, it should be on the drawing, it's, typically we have a table, it shows that it's pretty much, it's all one, one soil.
Oh, it's way up here, yeah, it's one.
It's also on the overall site plan.
Yeah, we've got it, it's Colton, 22 Colton is what it is, the entire site is that, isn't it? Locations of any existing or proposed easements, deed restrictions, and/or convents, covenants. And, again, I don't know my names, I guess there might be some on there, I know that the lot line doesn't appear on there, they have included here. And architectural plans are not there, but, these, those are, okay, so they're included as well. Okay, and that's the last I have. Any discussion on the completeness of the application? If not, motion to accept the application is complete, and ready for public hearing is being offered.
Motion is complete.
Motion by Richard that the application is complete and ready to go to public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jane, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate the same aye.
Aye.
All is closed. Okay, completeness part of it, and we will move on to the site plan review, and we'll open up the public hearing, and, and you may make your presentation.
Matthew Ruthier from T F Moran, representing the applicant, F W Web. As previously discussed, my lot line adjustment, we have existing lot 34-32, which is 5.09 acres, and we are adding an additional 2.012 acres from 32-1. The intent and purpose of that is obviously to supply enough room to construct the, the site, as well as construct the stormwater detention pond. We are proposing a 43,628 square foot warehouse office showroom, associated with F W Web, with the associated improvements. We have, we are providing 6C spaces based on a variance that was granted previously. We're utilizing standard spaces that meet the town requirement for the south of the building, along New Hampshire Route 32. On the west side of the building, we're utilizing larger spaces just due to contractor vans, those would be 10 by 20, with a 30-foot access aisle on the rear. And east part of the building, there will be some additional contractor spaces, parking spaces to the north. The, the area to the north and east of the building will be completely surrounded by fence in order for security. That will follow all around the perimeter, and come back and tie into the building to the east near the truck entrance. We're proposing two access points to New Hampshire Route 32. The western one will be mostly for contractors and people visiting the showroom, which is located in the front of the building. The driveway to the east or north is, will be for truck traffic only, for deliveries and whatnot. We are treating, it'll have onsite utilities, we're proposing a well in this area here, our septic will be located in the back up here. We're directing all surface runoff and roof runoff to the stormwater ponds, we have two of them, one to the east and one to the west. These will all infiltrate and be filtering practice, just due to the sandy soils and rapid permeability state requires us to slow those down and create some kind of filter. So those will all be filtered back into the ground and recharged. We have provided landscaping for your newer regulations, obviously, we're looking for a waiver in regards to the frontage and the requirement. And that's pretty much the, the base point of it, loading docks are in the rear, there will be an access drive indoor, we're inside the building, as well as one to the north. Everything is provided low, low level cutoff lighting, to meet the requirements, dark sky compliant. And that's pretty much the, the general program that's before you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board here?
Where's your snow storage review?
We have snow storage highlighted on our overall, overall site plan, I believe. There'll be some snow storage here, pretty much straight from the parking back. We have this whole area that we are utilizing as storage. This is somewhat of a depression that then will, as it drains, it will run out into this basin. And we have some additional storage here because it's actually bermed up to that pond as well, so keep it pretty much under the parking. This parking, for the most part, is sheeting down to the edge along some Batumus curve to the outlet point there.
Would you address your, your traffic study? You did a traffic study by the looks of you, correct?
Uh, yes, it was a general trip generation memo.
And I see that, that you did it under the category of warehouse development or warehouse, and it just seemed a little, the, the traffic seemed a little low to me for, for what this is going to be, this is going to be a little bit more than a warehouse, right? Because there's a showroom there, it's going to be wholesale, but the contractors are going to be coming in and out of there, purchasing, you know, supplies for the day, as I do up Keen, where it's up Keen, it seemed, I think it was eight, let me see if it's here, looked like, on the peak hour, yeah, weekly AM peak hour, Jason Street, let's see, total trips, eight. PM peak hour, Jason Street, total trips, nine. And, is that submitted to the state, or, or is that just submitted to us right now?
That has been submitted to the state, again, part of, part of the, you know, the adjustment on the traffic is you're looking at peak hours, where, again, contractors are going to be coming in times that aren't necessarily on peak. The hours, I believe, start at 6:30, and go to, I think it was, what was the?
Yeah, it was 5:00.
Yes.
Five.
So 6:30 or 5:00 during the week. Saturday, they, I believe it's 12, and then Sunday they're closed. So, again, the, the hours that the trucks will be coming will be typically six to seven AM, so those are obviously included in the traffic report as peak. But the remainder of the stuff will typically be off peak.
But they, you must have information from your other locations, correct? Even the one in Keen, for that matter, traffic location, I've been to the one in Keen before, and it just seems to me that there's more traffic in that going in and out of that one up there, and that's going to take the place, this one's going to take the place of that one, correct?
Yes.
Do you have any numbers from your other locations that you could bring to the board for, you know, just traffic numbers? The, you know, it's, it's just, you just figured it as a warehouse, trips in and out, and I think there's going to be more than just warehousing going on there. You know, it's got a showroom there, and, again, there'll be contractors in and out of there to purchase the goods, and then maybe bringing clients in and out of there to the showroom for the bath and shower, or whatever they've got showing on there.
Wouldn't the general public be allowed to go in like they are this one?
Well, yeah, yeah, I would imagine the general public.
It seems like the category would more appropriately be something like a lumberyard, you know, like Hamshaw's. Because it's that kind of blend of, of customers.
Yeah, I mean, again, the classification is typically, was done by our traffic departments, typically based on the, you know, the overall use of it, which again.
Based on square footage?
Correct.
Because 55% is the, the yard, basically, right?
Correct, and, and it's considered a warehouse use just because of the nature of it. Again, people, warehouse can be kind of twofold, you know?
But, that's what I mean about that, you know, being at a warehouse, yeah, you wouldn't think that there's too much traffic in and out of a warehouse, but this is, like, you know, is designated as, on the sign probably will be, F W Web Company Wholesale, you know, not necessarily warehousing, I know you're going to warehouse stuff there, but you are going to sell wholesale there, and you're going to sell to contractors, you know, in the morning, before their jobs are going to be going in and out of there. I think we should have a more accurate number, whether it'll make any difference or not to the state, because that's their road, they initially look at the numbers on, but I think it may make a bit of a difference, don't know, but it should be, I think, I don't know, it's a board decision.
When was this traffic survey done?
Again, this, what, what the board needs to understand that this is a trip, trip generation memo, so it's based on standards, there's no, there was no counts done, it's not, it doesn't base it on the counts, it's based on empirical data that shows what is going to this type of, to property.
But that data has to be collected within the timeframe. What I'm getting at is, if you've done it during the summer, you don't have bus traffic, you don't have student traffic, or you're teaching.
As I was trying to clarify, again, this was not, there were no counts conducted.
This is typical, right? This is what's typically done on a warehouse, and that was my point about you using just a warehouse delineation as opposed to warehousing and sales, whether it's, it's not retail sales, it's wholesale.
We've reached out to DOT, have not heard yet, but they will obviously, you know, give us their request, should they think that it's going to generate more, they would request us to do more as far as the study goes.
But as you reached out to them, did you say it was just a warehouse?
Well, you know, again, they're, they're very familiar with these types of reports and stop signs.
They should know the company, I would think.
Right, so, if they request more from us, obviously we'll provide it, but the standard is a trip memo, because it didn't meet the threshold that then requires a standard full-blown traffic, so.
Yeah, and they have their traffic studies that they've done of that road fairly recently, I think. But again, getting back to the, the trip generation, I, I think they should know, and the board should know too, what the standard trip generation for a wholesale, as well as even a showroom or something like that would be, as just, instead of just for the warehousing, because there's going to be more than just warehousing there. What's the board think about that?
Well, I'd agree with that, and I think it's the retail part of it too, because that's going, I've gone in there, it's, you know, there's usually quite a few people going in to get there.
Yeah.
You know, the homeowner that wants to do the stuff himself.
And, yeah, it's going to be designated as wholesale, but it's probably going to end up being more like a retail rather than a wholesale, as far as trip generation, I would think, anyway.
I think most of the traffic that the existing rub is in the, the rural area, the interior space, the sales room.
So, I think more information in that regard, the board might want to see, and the state, they can make their determination, again, it's their road, they have the final say on it, and they say it's fine, and it's fine. I think the board should know. Let's see, what else? Any other questions on the site plan from the board? Let's see.
I have a lot of questions about landscaping, but I can put those up.
Now, let's get into that because of the, the waiver that they asked, more or less waiver, the landscaping of those trees in the front there, need to discuss that. So, is that part of what you had on there? I think I have a couple.
So, I did a review, I looked at the landscaping.
No, Dan, yeah.
We're, we're between town planners right now, and so I wanted to look at this very carefully, and I also wanted to look at this very carefully because this is a part of town that we're used to seeing as a big open expanse of green, okay? That's what, all we've known forever. And this, how this looks is going to affect a lot of people who use Route 32 as a, a major artery in Swansea. So, I can start with the plantings themselves, or I can go through the, the regulations and make comments, do you have a preference?
However you'd like.
Okay, all righty. So, for planning board members, I did put together a spreadsheet looking at the specific plants that are proposed, okay? Do you have, have any of the copies of that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I just, I want to bear these particular species in mind as we think about where they're going to peak. It's code-coded here. So we have three kinds of shade trees shown here. The first one is the Makia, or Amur Makia, and they've got 11 of those shown along this, this edge here, and a couple others tucked in here and there. And then, eight flowering crab apples, which are shown in orange, and they're kind of spotted in here and there. And then the primary planting is the 24 Japanese flowering cherries, which are all along this front, okay? And I looked up each of those species in our handy book here, and this, our source is the manual of Woody Landscape Plants by Dur, and learned that the, the Amur is a nice tree, okay? It's going to grow to be about between 20 and 30 feet, and it has frulent spread, it's a slow growing plant, so it'll take, it'll 12 feet over 20 years, you know, it's not going to shoot right up, but it's, it's a very attractive tree. The crab apple is going to be a problem, okay? It will grow to be 20 to 25 feet, which is great, but this particular cultivar is severely susceptible to scab, and also susceptible to cedar apple rust and fire blight. And I would have to recommend that you look more closely, if you're going to use that kind of, if you're going to use a crab apple, there are varieties that aren't going to die quickly, or be very unattractive quickly. And the, the third one, the Japanese flowering cherry, I think is, it is not a long-lived plant, okay? 25, 15 to 25 years is probably all we're going to get out of those. It suffers with canker, virus, and bores, and it's often short-lived. So, then the other, those are the, the shade trees that are proposed. Then there are two evergreens, there are two kinds of evergreens, one is the Colorado Spruce, which grows between, grows up to a height of between 30 to 60 feet. That's probably a good choice for this site, but 30 to 60 feet might be a little bit tall for what you want to have. And then the, the giant Arbor Byde grows. And then the giant Arbor Byde grows to anywhere between fifty and seventy feet at maturity.
Yeah, I have to, I have to comment that typically when you look up plants online, you're not going to find these standards. What they're using is a standard tree. These are from a local nursery and because we're in the airport district, we obviously cannot go to that height with trees.
I'm not saying that. I think you might want to look into that.
I would just caution that, that some of the standards that are found, both in Dur, as a landscape architect, myself, and, you know, sources available. A lot of times they use, just use the standard, standard plant, not the different varieties, which have been manipulated to be in better, better producer, better health, and not be as susceptible. So, I just wanted to make that.
Okay, I'm not really sure what you're saying, but all I'm saying is, I think we would prefer for the trees that are there to live a long, healthy life, okay? Because we need good screening on that property. And then there are, just for the planning boards, everything else is a fairly small shrubbery. So, in looking through our regulations, we call for a minimum of one tree for every thirty feet along the perimeter of the parking area where parking spaces are provided. And it looks like you're showing, you've got six of the Aimer here. And it looks like you're counting one of these crab apples as your seventh tree. And I would hope that you would, rather than double count that crab apple as your parking lot tree, to put a seventh Aimer at the farthest corner. I don't, I can't do the directions.
Why would that be? What are you screening, the airport? I mean, the airport's at that far.
The approach from Route 32, as you come around, we're really going to see this side, okay?
Okay, but just way devil's advocate here, you know, you're looking, your site distance is going like that. You're looking from there, you know, anything this corner of the building. And, you know, they may agree to put a tree over there. I'm just pointing out that it might be kind of a waste to do it because was the road coming like that? Was it like so? I don't know if you see the corner of the building. You're going to see the building anyway, regardless of what you got for trees there. Think they're the proper distance apart, weren't they?
Yeah.
Let's see, this, yeah, they're thirty feet apart. But I don't know about that. I don't know if you really need it screening there or there. That's more green ability. And you're also suggesting, before we get further to you, you're also suggesting that they change these crab apples, is that correct? I mean cherries, sorry, cherry trees.
Yeah.
Because of their disease tendency to die or?
Yeah, they're not, they're just not going to do well there. There are other species that they could use instead. I'm not, you know.
I'm going to, and you, you think they'll do well there because of what you're?
Well, I mean, is there a particular species that you think would be better? Because, you know, we're, the challenge for us is obviously the height limitations on vegetation.
Right.
And because we're next to a highway, we can't just go plant a tree that's going to then be sixty feet tall.
I understand, I understand the idea.
So, everything has to be.
Fine, I, what I would, if I were in your shoes, I would try to find another cultivar of that tree that's going to have greater success, that's less susceptible.
We certainly can look at that, absolutely.
Do you have any suggestions off the top of your head? Or do you?
No, no, it's not, that's not for me to say. If he's a landscape architect, he knows all the, right?
Yeah, I mean, we can look at the different options. Again, you know, it's a, it's a difficult spot simply because you're going to have spray from salt and sand, and you're limited to the height zone.
So, you feel that the crab apples will do okay with the salt, spray salt?
Or the cherry, yeah.
Or the cherry.
Yeah.
They're typically pretty hardy when it comes to urban environments. You know, again, because of height limitation, it's rather difficult to find something that, you know, is going to fill in and, and match the landscape based on the limitations that are given.
Okay, let's nail down that, let's nail down the number of those trees there too. You're suggesting another tree right there, right?
I am, because that's what the regulations call, the minimum requirement of the regulations would be to have seven trees in the row.
And they're coming this one, so.
They're applying this one to the parking area, okay, as far as I can tell.
And do you see what we're talking about there?
Yeah, I, you're talking about the bump-out island where we're putting the trees.
Yeah, but you're counting one of those and so the trees on the perimeter.
So, as, as some, as we typically do this, and again, this is kind of an education for you, how we calculate things. So, when we do perimeter for parking, we actually say this, this parking comes straight across. What we do is we do a full perimeter line all the way around and pretty much stop it where the edge of the parking is. Because that, once you pass the certain point, it's a drive aisle, it's not parking. So, that's how those calculations are done.
How do you calculate that?
Slide them all down.
What's that?
How do you calculate that one, from there to there? Is that what, we just said you did not from there, from there to there?
Yes.
Okay, so if that's your, if that's how you do it, then the math would work to slide this whole row down.
Yeah, we certainly can slide, slide it down and add that additional tree. I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, then, and this one would end up here?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a shift.
Yeah, just shift it down.
So, you'd have a total of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven trees on the, is that the east side? Or southern, yeah, southwestern side, southwestern side of that parking area. Okay, let's, let's move on to these. There's a number of these trees that they're asking for less than the frontage requires.
All right, so, so we actually have been working on a miscalculation of the frontage because we were working on, what, I think nine hundred and?
Yes, I just picked up on that, that there seems to be some discrepancy.
And the true number is actually one thousand?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
I believe so.
Okay, which means that rather than, you were asking to have a waiver to reduce that total count by seven trees, but actually you need to have thirty-four trees, is that correct?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five trees are actually what's required.
Thirty-four point six is what it comes to.
We have proposing twenty-four, right?
Yeah, and, and I don't see any rationale for that, okay? In your waiver, you're talking about that they interfere with the flight path, but you've got taller trees in other parts of this proposal and further, and you also say that there's an issue with utilities, but you haven't defined any utilities that would be in this area where you're asking to halve the number of trees.
We have, there are overhead utility lines there.
There are telephone poles here, there are telephone poles right there.
Telephone poles, you know, currently there are a bunch of encroachments.
It shows the overhead right there.
Okay, I see one, but if you can get away with all of these, why can you not also get away with the ones in between?
Well, again, you know, as, as, as most people understand, you're trying to screen, you know, again, this, you're trying to soften this.
Okay.
So, that's how we looked at it. Again, again, the point of having a building is to have some recognition without a full wall of trees.
So, so what your waiver is then perhaps not accurate in that the reasons that you give in your waiver are your real reason.
Well, it is to some, some degree, obviously, because of the fact we have, we have a different elevation change, so we are climbing.
Yeah, that's a lot higher than that is down there.
Okay, but our regulations call for thirty-four trees along?
They call for thirty feet between the trees.
Thirty-five trees, thirty-five.
You've got thirty feet between all these trees here, and then sixty between those trees there.
So, he can fit, he can fit them in and still?
So, these must be what you drew in there.
Those are the ones I drew in there.
So, the rest of the board needs to take a look at that, and we need to make a determination as to whether they should be thirty feet on center all the way there or sixty feet on center all the way there. As we move through this, we'll address the next thing. So, anybody have any? Can you see what we're talking about here? Want to come up, take a look at the plans?
What did you just say? You said it very quickly. We need to consider if they have what or?
They're asking for less amount of trees along that perimeter there than is required for our regulations. They've got, we require them to have thirty feet between trees.
Which is what we showed here.
Which is, this is thirty feet, and that's, that's screening their storage area, the large storage area back there. And then they're softening it, it's like he put it softening it there. They, they want the building to be seen a little bit more, so they put the trees on sixty feet on center here.
Well.
And that's part of what they're asking for as a waiver. And I guess the.
This is original, these are original, original, original changes, and I added in between.
We get into a slight one.
This is original, this is original.
There's nothing there.
Right, yeah, but I'm saying these are the ones that they put in.
Victoria added those pencils ones in there. But yeah, a slight distance there, where is it close up?
Pretty much. Like where's this large?
Oh, right there.
There is a slight distance, I believe the trees are on the slight distance plan profile.
Yeah, I think you're right, I think they are on that.
So, we made sure that behind that, so that we don't have any problems exiting drives.
So, you put them in about, they're in about ten feet from the edge of that road.
What's, what's this?
I don't know, look, if that's the center, that's ten feet right there from that line to that line.
Is that center thirty-two, or is that?
I don't think so, that can't be the center thirty-two, right?
This is the edge of thirty-two? The north edge?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, so we thought, and you have, you do your above.
Oh, yeah, we're on, we're on the high. Obviously, the trees weren't produced much, so we're down the hole.
Right. Those are, these right here, that, I think it's that, beauty bush they call it there, that's what those are.
Yeah. Have you grown that before, the beauty bush?
Oh, yes.
So, it's sort of, it's kind of scrubbed.
So, the question is, those are thirty, those make it fine. The question is the distance between these trees. There's sixty feet now, should they be thirty feet, should they be fifty feet, should they be forty feet? You know, let's determine that.
If we put them, if we put them at this spacing, we're still giving them a waiver. If we continue the spacing that's shown here, all the way across here, we're still giving them a waiver of two trees because we, the frontage calculation was inaccurate to begin with. So, these, these drawn-in trees represent how many should be there for the nine hundred and thirty-five.
If we save thirty feet, then whatever the thirty feet comes out, they're going to have to put that many trees in there. Regardless of what the calculation was wrong or not, if it's thirty feet, they'll come out to that measure. But I don't know whether, you want to see that whole line of trees there. I think it's a nice design, maybe not sixty feet between, maybe fifty feet, maybe forty feet.
I can offer that most towns do typically forty foot spacing, forty to fifty, just because when you have a good-sized tree with a canopy, you're talking at least twenty-five feet per side of the tree.
But these are good-sized trees, these are small trees, you know, they're not like towering those.
That's, that's kind of the standard, and as I said before, we're kind of limited.
These are small ornamentals, is what they are.
Okay, we're forty foot scaling, so if it was forty feet, it would put a tree right there, that's forty feet. And again, another forty feet like that, so it'd be about three-quarters of the way to where he's going to be existing tree, which is around the forty-foot.
Okay, so they're already, look at what we're looking at. If we're trying to screen this yard, the building is, is going to be, but the rest of this is just going to be pavement and yard.
Yeah, you have storage racks, you have a lot of storage out there.
It's going to be, yeah. So, I don't think we want to try giving more space to the trees.
Okay, we're bringing what you threw, speed up some of the.
Well, we've already got some open, open space here. I mean, there's no landscaping along this front part, so this is the only protection we have against that, you know, metal building.
Better than what's there now, looking at that junk pile, that old garage that's sitting there, there's absolutely nothing.
Happy memories were there for a few moments.
That's what we're imagining it looks like, in case anybody has a color card up here. That part there, right between there, looks to be.
And do you know what part of the roof is?
I don't know.
Because it's sort of.
I don't think it shows. It just looks dark on the overhand there.
What part is the roof? The top part of the roof?
That was the roof.
Okay.
All right. Yes.
We're discussing the number of trees and spacing.
That's right.
Given the proximity to the airport and the major room that it's on, and our climate conditions, are these types of trees suitable for all of those factors put into one location?
All the factors, is that right? Yeah.
The airport and the airport fumes, the traffic, the traffic fumes, and our climate conditions. Are these types of trees suitable for that location?
I suppose that question could be asked about any tree, if you're going to go by that. You take a look at the airport, there's a lot of trees growing around the airport. We had it, we had it all cut down. Probably not, but.
Yes, that's why I asked, are these suitable for that, those, these conditions?
Are you thinking like more native species, which might be more suitable?
Possibly, I don't know.
How many fumes do you think are going to come off of those planes coming in out of the airport? It's not like a JFK there, you know, we've got a small airport there. It's not much, I've flown out of the airport.
I've flown out there many times.
Yep, so it's not that much activity going there, so I don't know if that's really something that we can hold and do, that well, that tree isn't going to.
No, but something we need to consider.
Yeah, we can consider it, but we need to be able to decide something too, instead of considering everything all night.
Japanese cherries and crab apples don't acquire an enormous height. So, I don't worry about those. And we're not planting oaks and elms and?
White pines and?
Pine trees.
No, airplane knows.
We removed all those a few years ago, except the Colorado spruce. They are planting some of those. They are, they're planting giant Arbor Byde.
If they get too high, then the FAA is going to come in and tell them to cut them down.
So, let's get back to the spacing, let's iron that out. What are we going to do?
I think, I think they could put them all in, and that way we'll be.
Put thirty foot in between? Richard, what do you think?
I would kind of like to add another ten feet to the spacing on it.
You mean like subtract another, like it's sixty feet now, you mean subtract ten feet?
Bring it down, instead of the thirty, put it like forty, there's a compromise type of thing. Because thirty, you're going to be extremely dense in there. Granted, it'd be nice around, around the staging area where they have storage and stuff. But if you continue it on down beyond the retail and wholesale part of it, then you're camouflaging the building, just covering up the building. Or maybe go thirty or four, uh, feet or so up to the edge of the parking area and then space it out further, open it up further.
They got thirty, yeah.
And then, so that way, open up like they did there.
You can still see what's in there.
That's an extra sixty, let's see, two, four, six, yeah, so.
Those are spaced thirty feet apart, what I drew was thirty feet.
Oh, okay, so those are thirty feet apart, okay. Yeah, that's an adding, an extra two more trees right there then. So, that'd be thirty feet space all the way up to about the corner of that building right there, and then.
And open it up from there.
A little bit better, yeah.
So, then we'd be giving them a waiver for one, two, three, four, five, six. We would be giving them the waiver for seven trees that they've requested.
Well, if we leave it at the sixty-foot spacing.
But if you drop it.
If you put it to forty or fifty, let's see, right there, this is definitely sixty right now, this is, looks like sixty right there. Forty might be better there, like you were talking about.
Has anybody, can you picture driving past, I think it's the Old Homestead Cemetery, where all the little, what are those, Jane? They're either, they're either cherries, flowering cherries or flowering crab apples.
Where are you down?
Where are you down, down Route thirty-two?
Yeah.
Those are crab apples.
Those are crab apples, and-
Rachel Schneier's yard has crab apples that are huge.
And they've been there for fifteen, eighteen years, and they're about ten feet wide, okay? So they, they just, these are not big glorious cherries at all.
We're talking about cherry trees right there, not the crab apples.
We don't have any Japanese cherries around here. We go to Washington to see those.
So then, if it were thirty foot spacing right to the edge of that building there, and then change to forty foot spacing the rest of the way from here. What do you think, Mike?
I, I like that compromise.
Well, I have a question.
I say with pavement. That way you don't have to worry about the things looking like crap. If you don't like it, then don't look at the goddamn thing.
Scott, which way is this spacing here? Is this the corner? And you're coming up from, you're coming up from the center?
That is this corner right here.
Oh, right. And that's where you don't want, they don't want as many trees, and that's where you're coming up from Swansea Center. And that's where the big red sign's gonna be on the end of it.
That's the sign right there, right, yeah. That's that corner right there. Yeah, that's that corner.
Huh?
Yeah, you're right, that's that corner that we're talking about right there.
Okay, and this is the big red sign?
Yeah, that's, this is right on the front of the building, it's right there. I believe it's right there, it's looks like-
And that's the part they want to be easily seen?
It's that sign right there you're talking about, correct?
Yeah.
It's that banner right there, yeah.
Oh, they only made it a banner, that's-
That's all it is, yeah, just that banner, yeah, the whole building isn't red like it was before.
I remember we, we talked about that at length.
We did, and they accommodated that the whole building is gray, except for that red banner in front there.
Oh, what's this over here?
That's, that's gray, that's, uh-
Okay, okay, good, that's good.
It's this color right here.
Okay, okay.
And it sticks up about thirty some odd feet, thirty-five feet maybe, something like that.
Now, where it says FW Web Company, that's where you want people to see that.
Well, where can it be able to hide the whole building?
Where it says Frank Webb Home, you're not that concerned with it.
Well, it's, it's the showroom, obviously, obviously, it's for, you know, uh, general public showroom. But just the FW Web sign alone should draw people to the building.
That's, that's right there.
But you know what? Those trees are not gonna be that big if you put them all in there. They're not gonna hide anything. They're not.
They're not gonna hide anything.
What's the height of the bush though?
Well, you know, you-
Fifteen to twenty-five.
The, the height difference from pretty much finished grade, uh, near the building is close to five twelve, I believe, and the road is about eight feet higher.
Oh.
So, add another, you know, a crab, crab fifteen feet probably in height, you know, again, depending on the perfect situation.
Talking about the cherries in there.
Those as well. They're all, they're all gonna be pretty close to fifteen diameter, fifteen up.
There's a natural berm.
Okay, well, I think Richard's suggestion might be good.
Yeah, I think so too, you know, the, you don't wanna cover it up entirely. They do want people to see the building a bit, and it's not that efficient if you're there, but the, what you're talking about, what Richard said was thirty feet on center, all the ways up to the corner of that building, and then forty feet on center from there to the end of the property. That's what we're talking about, right? Yeah. Yeah, I agree, you are right.
Yeah.
Victoria?
I disagree.
I agree. So, how about that for a compromise? Yes?
Sure.
Well, we need a vote on it because they're asking for a waiver on it. So, Richard?
I think a motion that we grant the waiver, as we've calculated.
That we do the spacing, thirty feet on center up to where the corner of that main building starts, and then forty feet on center from there to the southerly and southwestern end of the property. And that happens to be for the cherry trees. Unless you're gonna change it, unless you change the variety of tree there. You gonna look into that?
I will, I will definitely look into it, um, again, we'll probably have to stick to something very similar in nature, but perhaps a different cultivar.
If something's hardier, then choose it to be-
Yeah, usually we pull it from a local nursery, Millikins, which, if you go online, you can-
I'm real familiar with them.
You can look them up and, and see the different cultivars and stuff. And a lot of what they provide is more, uh, robust in this area, so.
Okay.
I'm concerned about the beauty bush. What's a beauty bush? Is it in-
A motion.
Well, I'm sorry.
I'll second Richard's motion.
Thank you.
Was there a motion?
Yeah, we didn't get a second.
I'll second.
Say, okay. Yeah, Richard made the motion, Brandon seconded it. He had the motion written down about the spacing of the trees. I think he got that before.
I got this. I got what the motion's about, it just didn't properly document it.
Okay, yeah. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor, indicate the same, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, the motion passes. That's what the spacing would be. You understand what we're getting at?
Yeah, forty from the, pretty much, edge of the building.
That's to this, yeah, right in there.
To the west, yeah.
Correct, southwest. Okay, you have more?
Sure, yeah, I got one. Um, I don't understand why we don't have a landscaping buffer shown on this end of the building, okay? And the reason that we're supposed to is that, um, it's, it's, um, it's a landscape, landscaped buffers between different uses of land shall be used to form a buffer between non-residential and residential uses, between single-family, multi-, uh, so, um, our regulations would call for a twenty-foot wide strip on this end of the building, um, wait, 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 that's not correct, I'm on the wrong part. Um, sorry.
Victoria, I have it here.
Do you have it?
Yeah, I do. So it says, any lots, uh, bordering residential zone or existing residential use shall have a twenty-foot, um, deep landscape buffer between any buildings and residential zone or use. Landscape area shall have shrub and or ground cover plantings and additional trees. Uh, and then it goes into the minimal, uh, one-tree caliber for every twenty feet of ground area.
So, how many trees would be required for that?
Well, the distance is about a hundred and eighty feet, from the looks of it.
We'll be sitting in the middle of that retention.
Looks like about one ninety, and that'd be times your twenty feet, not just square feet, cause it's supposed to be a twenty foot. This is actually twenty, this is actually thirty feet between that, that storm drain area.
So there would be room?
Uh, there probably would be, it's probably gonna, that may be the-
We do have drainage structures running through there. That's taking the highway runoff, cause we've had to reroute it.
That's shown on your drainage plan?
There is, there's, there's probably, there's a very small berm near the pond. So it gets pretty tight in there.
So you're proposing to not landscape at all that-
Again, because that, well, because of the residence zone, we understand that, but that residence zone faces the airport. So, so there's not, uh, a residence on that side. That is, we actually have to remove stuff from part of Funway Park that's in the airport property, because it was constructed that way at the time, pretty much to the fence line at the end of the property.
So there's a lot of drainage, uh, issues in the way on there. I see you've got the retention pond right there, yeah. It's five oh two, goes up to five oh eight, five ten.
So all the property, pretty much on the backside to the north and northeast is all airport property, so there are no residences, um,
Yeah, and across the street from there is that nursery, I think it is.
Yes.
Over here, yeah. Yes? No?
That's going to be, as, as you come down Route thirty-two, that's what you're gonna see, is that end of the yard, okay? And, um, I think anything we can do to maintain some kind of rural character with landscaping would serve the entire community.
Yeah, can't put it there. Basins are there. Doesn't really leave much room, really, to put anything in there.
You said there's gonna be a berm to the east between the retention and the highway?
Yeah, berm drops down into the site, is what, is what you're asking. Yeah, it's an eight, it's like an eight-foot elevation change, so it's gonna be, uh, you know, we have, we have a small area adjacent to the pond that's a high point of the berm. Again, that's, uh-
Something like even?
Probably gonna end up being maintained at some point in time, so if anything's put there, I would caution that this is most likely gonna get wiped out in the future.
That would look pretty, and you can't see.
Oh, I have got the number of this one. Um, what'd you call it? There should be eighteen trees in there.
Back there.
According to our regulations, that area should have eighteen trees.
They aren't gonna fit eighteen trees back there, the drainage is gonna be like that.
So maybe, maybe their yard is, needs to be shortened to accommodate what our regulations require.
Victoria? Victoria, I have a question for Victoria. What, what do you call the grass that blooms up and makes a big?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know. I only grew edible grass.
It would have room on the berm if there were two plums of that, and would soften the whole thing.
Well, I, I'd like to talk about how this, the yard is gonna be screened in general, okay? And I think a fence is probably gonna be pretty important for us.
That is shown right there.
Yeah, but I don't know what the material, what they're specifying for their fence material. I went to the web today, and it's, you know, it's chain-linked with the, the canted top part with the barbed wire and running along.
Uh, I think, again, I had looked at the regulations, and maybe we'd look at it, I think there's a discrepancy in there, as far as the, the buffer that we're talking about, because it's, there's some portion of your regulations further up the chain that I think makes that non-appleable, that's why I didn't do it.
Do you mean, do you mean what it says between adjacent buildings? Is that what you're factoring in?
I, I would have to look at it, but when I read it, and I read it carefully, I questioned it because of the way it was written. But I think there's a small discrepancy that kind of indicates that only-
The section is, any lot bordering a residential zone or an existing residential use, which we don't have, but we do have a residential zone, shall have a twenty-foot-deep landscape buffer between any buildings and the residential zone or use. The landscape area shall contain shrub and ground cover plantings in addition to trees, one tree per two hundred square feet.
But that is the building. That is not. I think that's what he's talking about.
Cause it's a-
There's no building there. It's, it's a storage yard.
There's a lot, you know, cause-
And I think, and I think the intent of your regulations is, was probably, it was missed, but like, you know, that's the way I read it, so that's why I didn't consider putting on apple oil, because there was no buildings. Cause typically you wanted the buffer in between the buildings. So if you were looking at it, it would be, obviously, the, the section behind the building would be the only section that would have a buffer, based on the way that's written.
Well, in, in this situation, I could argue the building is gonna be a lot more attractive than the storage yard, right? I mean, the storage yard is what we wanna buffer.
And I think it's gonna be, again, very difficult just because of the elevation change, and I, I appreciate, understand- Understand what you're saying. Again, if, if we had real estate, more real estate, where we didn't have the, been in that pond, uh-
Put them on top of the berm.
It would definitely be-
Where'd she go?
You know, easier to accomplish.
Look, what was there before, we could see. It was lower too, but we could see it, the golf course.
Yeah, and we lived through it.
Question for you, in the storage area, you're parking, uh, where you turn around for your trucks, et cetera. How deep are you, is it gonna be a pallet deep around the outside edge, or?
It varies depending on the product, cause again, you got pipe, so the pipe won't be obviously outdoor, long sticks, ten to twenty feet. Pipe won't be sticking typically, it'll be running parallel to the fence, I would imagine. Same with typically, they have pro, you know, empty propane tanks, new propane tanks, so, you know, again, a lot of that's probably gonna be parallel to-
What I'm getting, getting at is, like, looking at your traffic pattern for your trucks, there is more than ample room to cut back that east side, to bring that back inside, um, or getting rid of the residence part where you're approaching into residence. And I don't know if that would help so, solve our problem or not, but you're looking at, to your turnaround for your tra, the tractor trailer to back into the loading dock, there's, there's considerable space.
Well, and you have, I guess you would have to keep in mind that also it's a pretty large project, so when they put it on the floor, there's gonna be a fair amount of room to, to move through.
Well, unless your tractor trailers are not the scale at all, you get in order.
They're WB sixty-seven, so typical turn, typical depth to turn around is about a hundred and forty, thirty, thirty, forty. The, the truck that's shown shouldn't be, is, is a-
Do you see, do you see where I'm referring, Scott?
I have it here someplace, I just slide that over and let me have it.
It's team one.
So you're looking at us to pull back the pavement from the residential zone, for which by right, we're allowed to encroach by an entirety.
You're talking about this pattern here?
Let's see, this is, it pulls in, pulls it straight, and then backs in.
Yeah.
And also loop this way, but there's a great deal of space from here to here. And this angle here is probably what, twenty feet from the edge, thirty feet to the resident line. If we came back this way, to the whole, whole deal, then we're not encroaching, we don't have to-
I mean, we-
It may help, it may help with our-
They could, I see what you're saying, yeah, because, yeah, then you have it from the residential line, and it wouldn't matter, but what we're talking about, what our regulations talk about, is distance from that building to the residential line. And there's a lot of distance there. It's not, you know, there's way more than twenty feet there, so.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I'm just, you have to try and satisfy concerns.
But, they are concerns, but again, to make it fair, we have to go by the same regulations that they do, and those are our site plan review regulations. And, uh, what we're talking about here is that twenty-foot buffer between the building and the residential line or residential use, whichever is probably closer to it. And this, this again is their storage yard here, and, and yeah, you probably won't wanna be looking at some of those pipes and things there, but it doesn't look like they have room to put anything back there. Do you have room to put anything back there with that fence there?
There's only, there's, again, part of that is snow storage, but there's only really, there is a berm, like I said, it goes up, and then comes back out into the pond.
That's for the drainage part of it there.
That's only got about four foot standing or so, that's on the dock.
Right. We're not necessarily talking about trees, yeah, I see it is right there. Uh, but something smaller could go there to just soften up the blow of looking at that fence and then into that storage yard.
Let's speak to the fence. Okay, first of all, if it's snow storage and you've got a fence around the whole thing-
We've got gates.
You'll have gates, you'll just start it out that way. So, but what material are you proposing the fence to be made from?
Typically, black channeling, is that directly eight feet tall?
So what would you say to having, instead of it being a, a fence that we can see through, being a solid fence on the three sides that are exposed to the public? That would make a huge difference.
How tall is that fence gonna be?
Eight feet.
Eight feet high?
That way we've been, I mean, and how tall will your pipe racks be?
Five, six, five feet tall, probably tall. Yeah, not, not completely, not anything here, but-
The one that you, you have down there, I saw one too late, it was six feet tall, right? So that's not your standard?
For the outdoor pipe racks, it's not like, it's not like racking inside the building where it's, but, so.
Yeah, but, so that one was six feet, the one that was in the yard, that's not typical, you're saying?
I think that is pretty typical.
Okay, so six feet maybe for the, the pipe racks. And then you'll have stub plank, you'll have the, the home heating, oil drums. I mean, what sort of products are you gonna have stacked in the yard?
Usually, pipes, large pipes, um, like I said, brand-new empty propane tanks for underground, um, do you said oil tanks, some brand-new oil tanks, typically heating, have a heating condenser, like, stuff I think out there.
Yeah, any trace of stuff that builds outside, generally, could basically answer this, I think, uh, those are the, that's a, like, show.
I don't know, could go solid, but personally, I think a solid fence, it'd look like a junkyard is back there. You can see those solid fences right around the junkyard or something, at least, you know, the chain link, you can see through it, of course, you can see behind it, but it's not that solid blockage of a, big block in front of you.
Sorry, the name again, sorry.
You can use it.
Yeah, so Jamie Anderson from Draymond Construction, I represent FW Web. Typically, we do an eight foot tall, black vinyl coated chain link fence. The reason we do that is you, uh, it's durable, but also if you start putting PVC stocky type fences up, uh, wind blows them down and they're just not as more, as secure. And then over time, we feel that those type of, when we're asked to, to do those type of fences, they generally fall apart and they don't withstand the test of time. And if they're not maintained, it, it becomes an eyesore to your plant, so. Or, or a plant, yes.
Just got a point?
On the chain, on the chain link fence, how to take like the smaller, the, uh, Chris forces? Otherwise it's a ladder.
Otherwise it's a what, a ladder?
A ladder. You gotta put a total.
If they're talking about security, it's a bigger.
It's technically with the barbed wire on it, this fence shows anyways.
This is, this is, what's down the web today?
Well, let's get through the landscaping, if we can. Again, the twenty foot buffer, I don't think applies to the end of that storage yard. Yeah, we probably will be seeing stored in there, but I see it. Anyway, I know, I don't see them being able to put something in there, they may be able to put some grassy things like Jane was saying right there to soften it up a bit. Maybe nice if they could put some small shrubber around that end of it there. Having them put trees in there, I don't think in my interpretation of our regulations that we can force them to do it. Anybody else?
I agree.
I'd like to see it look better.
We can ask them to put, to dress it up a bit with some small shrubbery there, they certainly could be able to put that on top of that berm right there.
The retention pond will be grassed on the sides around. And they have a retention pond at the right estate in Keene. And it has things growing in it and around it. The retention pond down at, um, Nanotech is not unattractive. There's, there's berm and it's grassy and there are plants. So, but they have more room, so they have more room for plants, but that's why I, I just have, was thinking that you can get those grasses that grow in a circle and they're soft looking and they get, you can't see through them. If you, if that was planted on top of the berm on the roadside, it'd be, it could be very attractive. Now in the winter, they have just stalks, dry things on them.
You're talking, you're talking ornamental grass, ornamental grasses.
Yes, yes.
But you're eight feet higher, that road is eight feet higher.
The berm is, I think.
That berm is five oh eight.
Two feet high.
Well, yeah, the berm at the end is about five oh eight, it looks to me at the end.
Yeah, it goes up to five ten, yeah.
And you've got the edge of the road at about five sixteen, so you've got about eight feet difference there. Road is eight feet higher, so you're still gonna be looking down on that. It might soften it up for the fence there, look at it, and probably would, grasses or something like that growing there. But like Nanotech as well, you can still see Nanotech building down there. It's not really, it's about the same color as the one here, you can still see through it.
But not a, not, not a.
They don't have oil tanks and stuff sort out there, but you can still see going there, right? So they have a, a yard that you drive around and look down there, and they don't have tanks, they have parking lot.
When you go around Sanford Drive to the back of it, you see the parking lot, yeah.
Right.
But not a storage yard.
Even though it's not required, can we make a suggestion or a request that they put in something of that nature?
Let's ask him right now about putting in some kind of, something to soften up the end of that fence right there, if we've got a shrubbery or.
Yeah, I mean, we could do ornamental grasses, a, a portion of the bottom of the fence.
Yeah, just to soften that look, that view from right here.
We could easily add some on that berm section, eh, to break it up a little, if you want, I mean. They can get pretty large, but.
But it, it helps soften the look of that fence up there, you'd be looking at that, grasses or shrubbery or a combination of those two, the full distance of it, the whole forward of it.
You can put even, I think you can even put some into the retention area, because it wouldn't affect.
Yeah, I don't know, um, this one, it may spread.
Yeah, there's, there's different types of retention areas, there's ones that need plants and want plants, and then there's one that don't, and it's, so.
Not gonna help us down in that retention, that detention area anyways, cause that's quite a bit lower. We want in the highest spot to be right, just about in that ten foot area between the fence and that.
So we wanna make that a condition?
Let's make a request, and if you agree to it, then it would be a condition, just to make it solid.
So, just a, here's a question, okay? Currently in Keene, the company is using an old cell storage facility for storing a lot of stuff that probably would be in this yard, okay? And I know that's just a matter of convenience, it's what you got, right? But I'm thinking about the, like the hamshaws, you know how there's the, the sort of lumber bunks that they have, where there's a solid wall and then, you know, facilities to, to, to.
Materials in, pull them out.
Would you consider using that kind of storage just on that end where that we're talking about now? That, and so that would not be a fence, but it would be a solid structure that would provide some screening and, um, you know, allow you to use your, just, you know, there's a slight roof and there's, um, you know what they look like.
Yeah, just because of outside storage, but we're not storing lumber, there's almost nothing, but it has individual signs, so it starts up. Creating a structure.
I think it'd look worse with that, you know, I know what you mean, I know what those are in hamshaws there, and I don't know, it's just a big, another big giant thing sticking out. Out of the way there, you know, almost like the solid fence that we're talking about before.
I mean, the, the other thing we could look at is we could do a vine on the fence, probably, to create a natural screen if.
Probably ought to stick to just the shrubber we were talking about at the end of it there, I would think.
What'd he say?
That stuff may grow by itself, you know, that invasive species and, and whatnot in there, but, yeah. But what else, what else do you have there, Victoria?
My, my primary point is that we could, that the fence, some of the fence could be solid. I think we've basically covered, there are other things that they're doing that don't meet our regulations, but I think that people's patience for landscaping has to that.
Oh yeah, I know, an hour and a half ago. Yeah, be kind, we're all members of the board.
So I think we're just gonna have to live with it, I get to drive by that every day.
You can certainly voice your concerns to anyone.
Uh, one of the things that they're doing is we require a ten foot, um, landscaped area around the sides of buildings with public access or that are visible from the public roadway, and what they're showing is a five foot wide landscaped area. Just have the minimum required width. You know, if we're deciding to do that, we should decide to do it.
And that's this spot right there, we're talking about. So you say that's five feet there, oh that must be where the bushes are, what's? I think it says where there, where there's public access also.
Or visible from the public roadway, it has nothing to do with adjacent buildings in that section, this is where, oh, you're just looking at the head it, landscaping between adjacent buildings, right?
And I don't see any legend, what is, is this cement, is that what, did you come over here for?
Yeah, it's a concrete walkway.
Oh, that's what that walkway is, okay, that's a walkway, cement walkway there.
And they've got some old juniper and, and whatnot in there.
Yeah, I know. Well, what does the board think about that? It would be around this side and this side, as you can see on the drawing there, it's five feet with all the shrubbery in there, and we're talking about ten feet in our regulations.
A minimum of ten feet.
Minimum of ten feet, it measures ten feet out to the edge of the sidewalk, but not ten feet of the landscaped part of it there. Does anybody think about that? Anybody wanna start? No, yes, maybe?
But the board do not say a waiver would certainly have one, again, the interpretation from our side, because it means adjacent buildings, so.
No, I, I don't agree with that interpretation, but definitely gonna ask for a waiver. Yeah, it did, it does mean that it's a ten foot area of vegetation on the edge of public access to the building or visible. So, everyone seen the drawing? Wanna grant a waiver for that five feet around there? It's ten feet including sidewalk, but it's like five feet of sidewalk, five feet of vegetation. This is right in front of the building, so you got that much vegetation.
I don't think sidewalks are considered landscaping.
No.
Just trying to think about Market Basket, the front edge of the building, they have a sidewalk. I'm trying to recall whether there's the buffer, landscaping, any landscaping between the sidewalk and the main building. If there is, it's less than ten feet.
It's way less than ten feet. And it's, those plants struggle, they really do, they have to rip them out, put in new ones.
Well, let's address that right now. If they're requesting a waiver, you're requesting a waiver from that ten foot rule down to what you have on your drawing to five feet, so let the board address that, uh, grant a waiver or not, if a motion would be in order to grant that waiver.
I move that we address that waiver.
Okay, it, what is your motion though? To, is your motion to address it or your motion to grant the waiver?
Just to address it.
To address it, well, we're addressing it right now.
That's what you said.
Okay, we need a motion to address it one way or the other, whether we're granting it or not.
I move that we not grant the waiver.
We move, a motion by Jane that we not grant the waiver.
I second Jane's motion.
Seconded by Victoria, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Do not grant the waiver, I'm in favor of not granting the waivers, that's an aye.
Victoria? Jane, aye. All those against the motion, no? Okay, so it, so it looks like the motion fails, now we need another motion to grant the waiver.
I make a motion that we grant the waiver.
Motion by Brandon to grant the waiver.
Oh, second.
Seconded by, by Michael York, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, or no aye, all those opposed?
Aye, I oppose.
Go oppose.
See, you could've gone if you voted with me, you've been done.
So, let's continue.
That's all I got.
That's, that's the last part of it there?
I have a question regarding all the landscaping.
Yep.
As trees may or may not die, as various planters may or may not need to be replaced, what's gonna be done about keeping them properly watered and replaced?
Uh, I, I can give you, I can give you an example that's pretty standard, most towns, they, they request you to maintain exactly what was approved for the land or duration of occupancy, and that's a pretty standard thing. Sometimes we make the landlord sign our line, so if you want us to add a note to the plans, I'm sure that.
We can, we can make it a condition down in the past.
And again, if they aren't there, they're in violation of the site plan, but by condition either way, usually get a one year warranty on those plantings from the nursery, that's usually standard practice, I think.
If they have to water it, also.
Yeah, well, um, they have to live, we don't, we can't really stipulate how often they have to water them or anything like that, but they have to be there. So if they're not there, then they're violating the site plan, what was approved.
They keep raining a lot of it.
Yeah, you're gonna have to, you gotta spray it from that road. Okay, landscaping, anybody have anything else on landscaping? Are you here for the landscaping by any chance? No, okay. Anybody have anything else on the landscaping? Okay, move on to the rest of the site plan, anybody have anything on the rest of the site plan? And again, that is the whole rest of it, there's drainage, let's see. We know what they're doing for drainage there, because there's a drainage plan right there. And it's laid out, there are two retention ponds, as you showed, one in the front of the building, one in the rear of the lot, I guess, or outside of the lot, if you call it. And what else, drainage there. While we're looking through these and discuss the lighting part of it there, there is a request from the Conservation Commission that some of the lighting anyway be on timers.
I thought it was motion sensor.
I mean, yeah, I'm sorry, motion sensor, yeah, keep me straight on there, because of nesting birds by the airport there, and I'm pretty sure they're referred to, is she here, she's not here, I don't think, they're referring to the lights on the back of the building, I guess. Yeah.
I think, I think she's worried about the press store, which is a small hall.
And that's on the rear of that building there, and they're gonna be, uh, the lighting, let me get to your lighting plan. Just discuss that, and if that's possible.
Says, artificial lights have been shown to impact the breeding success of many species, and she's asking for exterior lighting on the project to be motion sensitive normally.
Should be on CG.
Is it?
Yeah, looking way back here.
Can we just?
I had it before, I just wanted to see how many are laying, yeah, there it is, so. I can't quite see where, where the lighting, uh, where the lights in the back of the building is, are they off up here, like that? One there. Oh, okay, that's.
Two of there.
And then these are just at the outdoors at ninety, it's two here.
There's none on the fencing, right? There's not, there's no lights on the fencing, yeah? Are there lights on the fencing?
Uh, in the back, there's full lights here, there's, at these eight, these days, these are the twenty-five G M.
So what was the lighting plan, what is your lighting plan, illuminated twenty-four seven, like a parking lot?
Got them in a photo match, yeah, photo cell timer.
Okay, photo cell timer there.
Yep.
And so, okay, so a photo cell timer would shut them off when it got dark enough to shut them off and.
Yeah, and then there are also, shut them off at a certain hour, and then we could, we want to, as a safety, security thing.
So.
So how far past that?
Rather than having them go on and off, on and off all the time, motion sensors are a pain in the neck sometimes with that, it's just.
And with the men and deer that run through there, they're gonna be off and on all night.
Well, they got a fence in there there, but I mean, yeah, if the, if the full lights are on, motion sensors, right, yeah, on the other side of the fence, yeah, they would turn them on and off.
How far do they penetrate past your fence, do you know?
Uh, they don't, they, they're still, they're still at.
Yeah.
The heads would be facing in, so they really shouldn't provide any light leakage up past the light poles. So these would be facing this way, same thing, so.
Would your building ones be on timer only, and then your fence poles, your, your, your poles being on photo cell?
I'd, they would all be on photo cells essentially.
Uh, they would all be on photo cell, essentially timer, um.
Well, we've addressed this with the car dealerships as well, that, you know, all of their lights are on some of the time, but, uh, like all through the night, they have a few security lights on here and there, it sounds like that's what you were proposing.
That was the intent, yes.
Yeah, so, any idea what that would be, you know, you've got pole lighting there, would it be one pole, two pole, or?
Isn't that standard, standard just over the doors on a couple spots?
You have the doors here and here?
I think it would be over the.
In the loading dock doors?
In the loading dock, yeah.
All right, so that would work behind that, that was your security type lighting right there. Oh yeah, because this is gonna be locked, right, you've got a gate car for this.
Yeah, it would be a good lock.
I don't know, I think the photo cell would be fine for the lighting.
You're gonna spill, spill it past their property, that's not a danger to the wildlife that's out there.
They're full cutoff, so, yeah.
Yeah. Because I already said, and most of the sensors are gonna, you know, they're gonna catch the deer running by there, run by there all night long.
Yeah, that's, right.
And it's gonna be on and off, all night, this could be more of a disturbance, I think.
It probably would be more of a disturbance. They're planning on photo cell anyway, so I guess we'll leave it at what their plan is. Okay, we've addressed that, what else do we have? We've got. One site plan, one site plan, so, uh, drainage distance, site distance plan.
Mission, mission, concerns.
Twenty plans. We've covered a lot of that, because the board members have questions on any of these drawings here. If not, then the only thing, you wanted to speak to this issue, sir? Oh, you're for something else? You're putting up with, with the board, I mean. Yeah, we're, okay, we'll get to you then, before we, we hear. So, we discussed earlier the traffic study, and I think we should have that information here for us and probably for the state as well, they'll be wanting it, just for those different categories that we talked about before.
Do you'd like us to provide numbers for a different use?
For the use of that it's gonna be, like, you've got wholesaling there, but it's probably gonna be, wholesale, almost retail sales, because there will be people coming in there purchasing stuff, and I guess there are, you know, for your sake.
We can, we can produce that and email it all.
Yeah, yeah, and just with those calculations, now, uh, you're gonna use the same standards that you used before with the warehousing one, probably, I'm assuming, right? It comes from a standard, uh.
Yes, it's out of the standard manual, it'll be based on uses, even though it's, you know, classification-wise, again, it's warehouse use, but we'll, we'll add in or utilize square footage for like, um, you know, like you said.
Retail, yeah, retail wholesale part of it, and again, it's a showroom, so people will be coming in just to see, a little bit of traffic there.
The showroom is, what, ten percent of business of that?
Yeah, 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 I mean, it's good if you get good, good business there, but we should just see those numbers, I think, and.
We can look at those.
You've sent the warehousing one to the state already, did you say, I know I asked you this before.
Yeah, we submitted our DUT driveway permit.
And that one, it was on that driveway permit, and.
I reached out to them, but Frank was not around, currently, but hopefully get back to you tomorrow.
Okay, and when he gets back to you, though, um, you need to tell him that the board is requesting further traffic information.
For a different use, yeah.
For those uses, and would you supply them with that same information that you're supplying us with? Okay. What else are we talking about here? If there's nothing else, then.
So it becomes a condition.
Uh, we're gonna continue, I think, the public hearing, because we need that information.
Do we want to hear this gentleman to make what his concerns are?
Yeah, we, right after we, if, if we're done with the hearing for right now, we can continue to our next meeting.
Make a motion to continue the next meeting.
Okay, that'll be September fourteenth, I believe it is, September fourteenth, our next meeting, continue till then, public hearing, you get that information from us, and if you can show maybe what you're gonna do for the grassy area on the back of that fence, redo that landscape plan with the different spacing of the trees?
Yep.
And bring that in for that meeting? Okay. Okay, motion, uh, by Richard to, uh, continue the public hearing until September fourteenth, is there a second on that? Second by Ken, is our, uh, any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, we'll see you on the fourteenth, yes, go ahead.
Regarding the initial comments, we have, uh, two sheets of trees in common, so we'd like to come back on our one comment, develop on what we see.
Yeah, if, you know, you want them to live as much as we want them to.
Oh yeah, sure.
So, if you would take a look at that and just double-check your, your findings on that, and see what you.
I'm not saying species as much as culpable, you know, I think you can make a species work, but just get one set, have a better reputation.
All right. You're welcome, we'll see you on the fourteenth.
Thank you.
I don't know what he was doing, so I, I think he left, so. Did he go to get that other guy, I wonder, there was another guy. Maybe he did, we'll give him a minute here, it could be.
While, while we wait for that, why don't we just the select board's, uh, on street.
Let's get to that, let's get to that, now, I've got it right here. Oh no, I don't have it right here, why not? Yeah, I do. So. Let's just see what we're calling with here. And these are, this is under discussions part of it, and this is comments of the select board regarding purchase of one-ten Pine Street. And that is, is a piece of property right across the street from the dump or recycling center. And, and it's right, we're still in there, so, but this is in the end of our package, is what it is.
It's fifty-seven, one thirteen, you know?
Corner one there.
This is.
It's in between.
It's one that, yeah, it's right, it's right there.
Between, it's that, but it's.
The one next to the highway department in the halls of residence, there's that trailer that's out in the woods.
It's this one, it's not the crib.
Okay. Let's make sure I'm right about that, it's this one right there, this is the dump right here, correct? This is the Public Works Department, you own this one already, that's, that, uh, old Frank Buckland's house, right there.
Yeah, Buckland's house, okay.
That's the one, right there.
That's on the clock, you're cutting it out.
Okay, we have number twenty, number twenty-seven. Anybody know where that is? You guys know where that is?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, uh, it's come up that the select board can, uh, they, I guess made an offer, and it was verbally accepted by the owner, I guess it was Henry, that owns it now, and to purchase that, and it kind of makes sense, because dump is on one side, town-owned property, highway department on the other side, and that other parcel on the other side of them.
The corner parcel.
The corner park, right?
Yes, yes, it's around by the town.
That's town-owned, so, and that's sandwiched right in between those two parcels, so that would provide future expansion for public works in there, in that area.
Maybe they could put the fire station.
I don't know, might not be quite big enough, but, so.
They did, you'd have two fire stations on one side, though.
They're looking for a recommendation, you know, it's, they've got a.
I would recommend that we, that we.
Hundred and fifty thousand on there, and which is kind of a lot, that little piece of land over there, right across from the dump, but still.
Nothing else, a dump will get cleaned up.
Well, it might be someday, but, uh, you, you, you made a motion to recommend.
Yes.
That the planning board recommends that, big town, go ahead and purchase that piece of property. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Richard Lane, is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Okay, now you guys can continue the rest of your, your hearings.
We appreciate that. Now, can I go?
Yeah, now you can go, yeah.
You have to spend the night, and, and show your Nick Sluck for me.
Maybe he did leave.
I guess he did.
Yeah, maybe he did, I don't know. But I just asked him, and he said he was here for something.
I think we're gonna continue the meeting.
Yeah.
But he, I don't know if he said he was, he said he was here for something else, I thought, didn't he?
I don't know.
Well, he knows that if he's here for the, or, you know, was here for the public hearing, he'll know, and it's a separate, separate, he goes in. Okay, so, I guess, any other businesses may be required? And if there is no other business, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
They make one inquiry first.
One inquiry by Richard.
What are we looking at on the fourteenth so far, other than the two continuums?
Just a boundary line adjustment in addition to these, and some other. Motion for adjournment?
Oh, no.
Yep.
Motion for adjournment, adjournment by Michael York, is there a second? Second by our selectman's representative, uh, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor, can't pass saying aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay. We adjourn officially.